We've been President. If I may go through, the first thing that'll be on the agenda is the election of council offices. We know that there are two things that we look at. We look at the council offices and then you also have Josephine provided the officers and committee assignments. Again, you write down what your preference of which committee like to be on. Finance is always everyone, but the Safety Committee, Streets and Homies, Public Works, yada, yada. And then just turn that into whoever is elected, or give it to Josephine, she can give it to whoever's elected president of council so those can be formulated. But tonight, we have President, Vice President, Parks and Rec, and Finance Chair. I'll bring up two others, the JED Board, Nick is already on it, but we have an opening due to the change of council members. And the Cemetery Board, it's a three-year term. We were not on last year, but we would be returning this year for three years. So it rotates around so that the communities all have someone on that. So Josephine, those last two, are they voted upon?
You can discuss it among yourself, except that the only thing I will say with regards to the JED, excuse me, I don't want to chat. The Cemetery, they do have a meeting on the twentieth, so you might want to make a determination.
Okay, to the Cemetery.
Someone could be represented on that.
And does the JED have a meeting set up yet?
Uh, I don't think so.
That's gonna probably be a very hot committee this year with the Myers Project and the discussions that they want to have potentially with us in the JED. All the rumors going around, so, starting from the top, we're council president.
I nominate Nick Molnar, is that what we're supposed to do?
Well, we want to see who might be nominated. What happens when we go out on the floor, the mayor then calls, and if there's only gonna be one, he'll now, he'll call it a second time, would not expect a second one, and then can move right to the voter. Is there any other? Vice President?
I'll nominate Dave. I'm not really interested. You're not interested? Oh, all right, I'll take it. Are you interested, Sylvia or not?
You want to be Joe Biden of Macedonia?
You're gonna nominate me.
All right, Sylvia wants to be nominated too. That's fine, I'll take the nomination.
So we have Dave.
And Sylvia.
You're interested to be Joe Biden.
Yeah, I kinda.
Comes with a lot of power, you know. Parks and Rec, I would nominate Mr. Bilkey. He has already been to a meeting and has already given feedback to that committee. I have no problem, been on that committee since nineteen eighty-nine as a resident, so unless someone else has a preference.
Sylvia, are you interested? I thought you said you might be.
Sure, I'd be interested.
All right, I'll nominate Sylvia.
Finance Chair?
I'll nominate you, Jim.
Sylvia wants, I think, is interested. She did it last time.
Okay, any others? And so before we forget, Cemetery Board, since we do have the meeting.
Seems to be your baby, huh?
I've been on the board, I know. There is still a lot of work to do on that board.
Jim, I would, you can have it.
I would, I would have no problem being on that board.
It's a friendly group.
Yeah?
But it's a dead something.
Is there anyone else that has an interest of working with? I see dead people. They actually have a lot of fun. I don't, my baby no luck. Okay. There ain't no other discussion on that?
We're not gonna decide on the JED?
We can, we can talk about the JED.
We can.
Yeah.
I would be interested in the JED with Nick. I assume Nick wants to continue.
I too also am interested in it.
I'm interested in it also.
All right, then I'll withdraw my name from consideration on the JEDs.
So who are we saying for the JEDs?
Kevin, Sylvia.
Anyone else?
You're not interested?
I'm already on it. I think it's a two-year, two-year term?
You're already on the JED. You have no choice.
No, it's a permanent term if you want to be appointed.
Right, I'll say. But I think the appointment's by the mayor, actually, isn't it?
Yes, I believe that it is by the mayor.
Traditionally, whoever's on the JED stays on the JED.
Right.
Until they win the lottery and leave council.
Well, it's important to have some continuity on the JED for certain.
I'd like to remain on after the time.
You've been on the JED?
Yes.
You've been on the JED. I know I've been on the JED.
All the previous appointments are made by ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, so you know.
I'll have that one on the floor.
Cool. All right, moving right along, Resolution number one sixty-four, which was the independent audit of the city of Macedonia that had its first reading. Sylvia, this one was yours?
Yep.
Do you have anything you want to say?
When I spoke to the mayor, he said he was doing a preliminary review, and I think we can just hold it a second reading while he's doing that.
Is this on the check issues?
Yes.
Or hard?
It's on the credit card.
Credit cards. Sorry.
Well, it wouldn't just be the credit card.
Well, yeah, of course.
You should be doing the entire review.
But that was the original discussion.
Yeah, but you take the whole audit, you don't just take one piece out of it because it's a review of all our procedures.
Right, but the mayor said he was gonna take a particular look at that.
Second reading.
And I've been in that process, by the way.
Good, I appreciate that.
Okay, now I can put my stuff in order here. Next up, Resolution number three, this is for the Law Director. The assistant would be Tom Hanselak. The appointment for the Law Director would be Mark.
Mark, can you say your last name first?
Good day, evening. Thanks for getting to them.
I won't forget it ever.
He's easiest way to remember.
Perfect.
Mark G. Dave, would you take that one?
I prefer not.
Thanks. Discussion?
Did you hear what I said?
Pardon me?
You said thanks, I said no.
Oh, why not?
Because I said I would prefer not.
Okay, I'll take it, no problem. Any discussion on this? This basically provides continuity in my mind of a law firm that has truly assisted in the city since I've been here. Brought us money, won us cases, found us money when we weren't even sure.
I'll have some questions from Mark on the floor, if that's okay?
Sure.
I would prefer that we hold this a first reading, and I will have some comments on the floor.
If we hold it a first reading, we don't have, who do we have as Law Director?
Well, the Law Director remains in place until we replace him.
Mr. Deemer's Mr. Hanselak.
Okay, so the firm will still stay as is. Okay, Kevin, what are your comments? This is the time usually to bring them out.
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself. I wanted to know from Mark, other than Macedonia, where are you other acting legal counsel for?
I've been legal counsel for a variety of political subdivisions in northeast Ohio. Right now, I'm Assistant Law Director for Beefield Village, this guy privately, another municipality.
So you're the named Assistant Law Director?
Right, well, there's an ordinance that's pending, it's gotta be worked on next week.
Okay.
But I've been acting as Assistant Law Director here for nine months there.
Okay.
And then specifically for Zuljirad Home and Assistant Shrek Ball.
Okay, and named Assistant, so you'll be able to hook out. And what was your role here in Macedonia? Always, you know, I, being obviously my first meeting, I've met you before, but I never knew exactly how you came into play here in Macedonia.
Right, so I came on board Mr. Deemer's firm in two thousand and seven as a clerk. I was heard on, yeah, in two thousand and eight, and I've been working on city of Macedonia issues the entire time. As you, I think, you know, I grew up here and, you know, I'm a little bit on all that, so, you know, the city of Macedonia is near and dear to my heart. But I've been involved in pretty much, I'd say, thirty-nine percent of the issues that have occurred throughout the last two quarter decade.
So this would be your first Law Director appointment?
Correct.
Now, I guess in your role, are you planning to have anyone other than yourself, Mr. Hanselak, attend in the meetings, like such as I saw you over the last couple of years?
I don't foresee the need for anybody else now. Both of us, if you had a kind of looking for maybe somebody else from the firm, I would likely select from.
Okay, do you have a person in mind?
Uh, Dan or Joe.
Okay.
If I have them available.
Okay.
But like I said, I anticipate I'm gonna be covering the vast majority of the meetings.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's kinda, I guess in my last, I mean, we're naming you as the Law Director and not the firm that you've qualified for.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, here in number of ordinance number four, which is the appointment of the Chagrin Valley Engineering, Donald Cheehee. Mayor, do you want to say anything?
Just that Chagrin Valley is located in Oakwood Village, right around the corner from us, so they've been in business probably fifteen-plus years. The firm holds probably fifteen or sixteen municipalities, cities and villages in Cuyahoga County. They are well-versed in all the issues too, and all the other type of grant funds, so dot, what have you. They're certainly gonna be a lot cheaper for the city. Their rates are much less than what we were being charged through GPD. And so we're gonna see a large savings in that area.
Joe, I have a question, would you mind?
Sure.
You know, obviously, we have a large group of the city that's concerned about stormwater, particularly those people on ledge by seventy-one, or two seventy-one. We've got a, we hired a, where do we get a study, which nobody's, it's never been reported to council, so I guess my only concern is.
Where's that at?
Well, where's that at? How's that gonna go over to Chagrin Valley, or do we need to keep GPD in the, at least till that is finished? Because I don't want to let this just sit, and I know that the people down there are very concerned.
Nor do I. The study's completed.
Okay.
It's, it's being delivered to us. There's gonna be a meeting between GPD and Chagrin Valley next week. And they will exchange all information as it relates to anything ongoing. We provide them with PDF and other documents that are necessary for Chagrin Valley to hit the ground, hit the ground running on, on the various open-ended items.
So we own the, we own the study.
We own the study because we usually already paid for it. And, and I wish we probably would have held back on that study, by the way, because I probably could have got NEORSD to pay for it. And we wouldn't have had to go out and spend any money. It would have come through the new program that we're gonna have with them. So nevertheless, we're at where we're at, and we'll get the study, and we're going to try to work with NEORSD to try to get some of those problems taken care of over there. That's one of the areas that we can fight.
When do you anticipate us having the ability to disseminate that information to the public?
I'm gonna guess after next Wednesday's meeting, we'll have the document in hand, and we'll know what the study showed. And then we'll probably then let Chagrin Valley make their recommendations as to how we should tackle it and where we should go with it. And we'll also end meet with NEORSD to see what they're willing to do for us in remedying that problem. I mean, one property owner over there is willing to give us up some land in his backyard so that we can put a retention back there, which I think is what really needs to happen back there. And NEORSD, I think, is willing to give us some funding to do it.
But when we talked about this last summer, there was, seemed to be a great urgency at the time, and I think we all were concerned a little bit about exactly what this was, the study was going to produce. Now, the study's been completed, and they should have had opportunity to look at everything there. Are there recommendations in the study? Have you seen it?
I haven't seen it, no.
Okay.
They, they, it was too big of a document to send it by way of PDF, so therefore they said that they would deliver it, so I'm, I'm.
They're gonna deliver multiple copies then?
I'm assuming, yes, so that they'll deliver it.
So after the meeting next Wednesday, it should be available.
Yeah.
Okay, about the ordinance itself, are there any other questions?
What do we anticipate saving?
It's.
You said that we're gonna save money, do you have an, do you have an idea?
Do I have an, I have an idea? Well, I give you an idea, for example, I kinda did a little bit of an analysis on just one item, if you will, and that was like the Sioux Calvert. I think we paid about forty-three thousand dollars in engineering there for that Calvert, and under, under Chagrin Valley, it would have been about twenty-five.
Well, that's one of the things I, you know, it's basically a contract here with Chagrin Valley, and I think we need to look at some of the detail here and how this is going to work. And I think you know that I suggested that we talk to several firms and get bids on this kind of arrangement, because I think that's the guarantee, we will save money. And we haven't, we have expended a lot of money in the past, in some ways, that I don't think were very productive. And so I think from this, this particular area here, it says you want to hire him as of February fifth. Again, I think we oughta, this is a complex contractual arrangement here at this point, and I think we need to hold it a first reading, give them some opportunity to look at this and give us some detail on what we really think we're gonna be paying for the coming projects.
I disagree, and I, I think that I am pretty good at identifying who's good out there and who's not.
I'm sure.
And if, if we don't pass it tonight, I'm gonna ask that we call three immediate special meetings, or two more following this.
Let me ask a question, if we do not pass this tonight, does the meeting next week occur?
No, I, I can't put them on, and I'm in between giving them notice already, they're terminating GPD, and so they're gonna come to an end, and I, I need to be able to function in the city. I can't continue to wait for things.
Effective date says February fifth, that the meeting would be the twentieth of June, or he's willing to come in before his effective date.
Correct.
Well, then if he's willing to do that, I think that we should just allow him to do that. And I'm not saying anything other than we need to, this is a complex contract, we need to look at this in detail, and I, and it's our responsibility as council to do that, so I don't see any emergency here. If you, if you want to call these meetings, that's another thing, but I think we should just productively look at it, let them have a meeting next week if they want to.
Anyone else have some comments or questions? Nick, did you take this one?
Yeah, I think, it'd be my opinion that, you know, I trust in your ability to choose a company that you feel will be best for us, and I think your intent with going with this company is that we would, in fact, save money with them. And I know that you, you even put a press release out there that you have dealt with them in the past, and you went as far as to say, is that a conflict? And I, you know, I respect the fact that you did that because you avoided, you know, future issues going down the road. So for me, I don't see the, the reasoning to, to hold this up. I think your intent is, is the right one to, to save the city some money, so I'd like to look forward with it.
Anything else? Okay, number five is.
So, are we only going one on that then, or are we?
Personally, I'm not seeing why we're gonna do one. I've already read the contract, it was attached, it was presented to us in advance. Any questions we could have had, we could have presented to the mayor in the past two days. I trust his judgment, and I also know it's gonna save us some money. We had had discussions before this legislation about keeping GPD and making changes, and so, you know, I support it. I would go one, two, three personally. I want the savings, and I want someone here. We have stormwater, and we have roads. We got two hot issues that can't be won.
If, if the issue is that you want to take it out to bid, then I, I don't agree with that. You don't hire companies based on what gives you the best price. You hire what's best for your city.
Bid does not mean best price, but it's best value.
Then why would you, why would you bid it out?
Because you want to see, obviously, you want the best combination of services and price.
And you don't think this company can supply that to the city?
Well, I'm saying that you can't really tell that. Like when, last year, when we had our desire to have, go to that trash company without any bidding, which you may not have been here when that happened.
That was my first meeting.
And we, we did in fact insist upon going out for bid, and we got a much better price out of them. So that's all I'm saying.
I mean, that's rubbish.
Well, but that's still.
This is the cities.
It wasn't rubbish, but nonetheless.
This is the city's engineering department.
Well, it's true, and we have GPD right now.
I mean, do we have projects right now that are gonna be put off?
I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm telling you my opinion, and I've seen this.
You're entitled to it, you're right.
Right.
All I can say is, is if you take the contract that GPD had with the city, and you compare the one from Chagrin Valley, you're gonna certainly see the hourly is much less for the principles that we'll be working here, and all the way down the list. As well as any project that they may counter for us, such as, like the Sioux Bridge, and, and the cost of difference would have been, like I said, twenty-five versus forty-three thousand dollars in engineering for yourself. I think if you, and if you base it on those numbers, I think that that's the reality, and that's what you're gonna find. And, you know, it's, Don Cheehee, by the way, is one of probably only a few that possesses a PEPS similar to Joe Shavoni that we put on our, our planning commission, but very experienced. Understands all of the disciplines of engineering, and, and comes highly recommended, not only from the fact that I had used him in the past, but the fact that many municipalities throughout northeast Ohio use their firm.
Yes, I know, they're, they're, I'm not saying anything critical about Chagrin Valley Engineering. I did not see, and I did compare to the, it's a little difficult to tell because you can't tell which particular people be, use it on which project. So it's always difficult to tell exactly what the differences would be, but let me just make this comment, that the price of this really comes down to whether or not, how many hours are expended primarily. And that's something that you, we need to be looking at in terms of how we contract, and the actual ordinance. So I, I really don't see that there's, you know, this is, we can, we have another meeting in January, I'll have more time, and I can even give you feedback on some of the concerns that I have. But I personally don't think there's an emergency here yet, and they, if they're willing to go to a meeting before February sixth, then I'd allow them to go to a meeting.
Any other thoughts?
I don't have a problem.
I just think we've terminated our relationship, and anytime you make this kind of change, it probably makes sense just to move forward. I really, I think it's time, we have a lot of projects coming up, and I don't really want to shuffle our feet on this one. I, I trust the administration making the right decision, because obviously, his intent is to save us money, and he'll be watching over that.
The other thing that you should be aware of is, since we don't have a permanent budget, we won't be doing major plans until we can get that in place.
We do have enough to get us through the first quarter.
We do, but it's a temporary budget.
And then we'll then be putting together before the end of the first quarter by law. We must have a permanent budget, so that's the issue.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Nick, why don't you just offer one, two, three, and we'll see what happens? Number five is the appointment of Mr. Nadabich as Public Service for the City of Macedonia. Nick, do you want to take that one too? I don't know if he's here.
Nadabich.
That is number five?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Well, we started with.
Yeah, no.
They didn't page properly, that's why.
Right.
I think I got this right.
So you're a glutton for pain?
Absolutely.
Molnar's taking that.
Are you, are you comfortable with everything? I mean, this is what you want, obviously, and are you ready to move forward?
Yes, I am.
Any questions?
Think we should do third reading.
One, two, three?
Yep.
You got it.
Who's doing it?
Thank you, John. John, I've gotta say.
Who's doing it?
Number five, on behalf of those residents that we've worked with as your interim, thank you, thank you, thank you. There's been a lot of issues that we know we've talked about, from poles to streets, to potholes, to water me, you bath by fire, buddy. I need Billy Potts for it, thank you. Okay, number six is Sylvia, as the current Finance Chair, we can take that one. This is to transfer funds to take care of our bills for the legal careers, Mayor. These are passed through.
Yes.
I have some questions. What, what are the unpaid obligations? See, that's what it says, the unpaid obligations from two thousand and fifteen.
Well, I believe that these are bills that, as I understand them, they've been sitting, waiting to be paid because they had not been appropriated.
I, I guess I understand the definition of what unpaid means, but what specifically are there, and I have not got the list to look at it?
I think they're for maybe.
Okay, so it's just to one place?
No, I think it's for four or five separate unpaid obligations.
No, I guess my question is, is just to the law department?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So no one, no one else, so, okay.
I can give you insight.
This is the thirty, this is the thirty-three thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
I can give you insight as to what this is about, if you wish to know that, because I have a spreadsheet, and I can send you a copy, Kevin, if you'd like to have it.
Could you copy all of this?
This gets to hold for the first, this will get us to hold for the first of the year.
If you don't catch us up.
And it will close out two thousand and fifteen.
He took out the forty thousand, he took out the money for the last December, and he remembered that, it's, it's partial, it's.
He made a partial payment.
I know, there was.
So what are you saying, it, it's for all of last year, or there's gonna be still more ODA from last year?
I believe that thirty-three will bring us up to date.
I don't think that there's anything outstanding above this thirty-three thousand.
That was my question. I kinda knew what the thirty-three was for, but it didn't specifically.
Other than current expenses.
Let me tell you exactly where this, because I haven't, as I say, keeping a spreadsheet on the legal costs. And the, on the Plough Farnhurst matter, and the billing from November, December escalated to, from approximately a thousand a month to, between those two months, fifteen thousand some dollars. And I do have some concerns about that because of the disqualification of the Deemerck firm and the Plough Farnhurst matter. The other two areas where we have had.
What does the disqualification have to do with it?
Because they, they're charging for something of which they're disqualified to represent the city. They can represent themselves.
Are the bills for after the disqualification or before?
Yes, certainly the December bill is. I can't tell on the November bill exactly.
So I, I guess I read somewhere where the law department is, I believe it's supposed to represent the city in all legal matters?
Well, that's what the Mr. Deemerck said, but in reality, the judge said something else. And I, I do have the documents here from the federal court website that shows exactly this sequence, which says, and the judge says very clearly, they can represent themselves, but not any of the city.
Maybe Mark can answer these questions. We talked a little bit about it, let me refer to my notes. So the way that the, the suit was filed, you said it was filed at five different, some, you know, through different ways. Are any of the people named? Isn't, I think Mike Ladd, Don Cook, and Nick Deemerck named as defendants?
Right.
So would they be responsible for any punitive damage out of pocket if the flit did more than this?
The way the complaint's drafted, it's kind of an allegation against all defendants that are named in the complaint.
Okay.
So, and that's, there's various aspects. I'm not gonna talk too much about it, obviously, it's a pending matter, but there are certain causes of actions for which the city is not covered by insurance council. Which was one of the reasons we have a lot of evidence.
That was my next question. So are they supposed to?
And punitive damages, a stop hole, deck action.
So when, when, when Deemerck and Havelcheck were disqualified, were they supposed to seek independent counsel, or were the, the law department still represents them?
That's what Councilwoman Hannigan's referring to. If you read the judge's opinion.
I have it with me, and I'm gonna enter it in the record, and I will read from it.
So do you think they should get independent counsel?
Yes, they should have gotten it, in my opinion, as soon as they were added as defendants in March by the judge in March of two thousand and fourteen. They did not do so. So ever since that point, we have.
You think the city should reimburse them for it?
No, I think that they should reimburse the city. We were paying them in part.
No, I'm talking that if Mike Ladd had to go out and get his own lawyer to defend himself.
Well, no, the insurance company attorney, the insurance company attorney is representing all of them, including Mr. Hanselak.
But he just said not in the punitive damages.
Just to be clear, I think, yeah, he's.
We have, we have no.
How about we do this, guys? We only have, you know, and I'm not gonna, I want the lawyers at the table, not the, I think...
I just, I just have some questions about...
No, I'm not talking about, I think, I have the documents.
Sylvia, do first reading on it?
Oh, yes.
There was a lot of documentation presented by the law department that talked about this.
Okay.
It was in the email dated January tenth, if you've read it. I mean, it did talk about it. Um, instead of saying, I read this on a federal website, that's open for interpretation and unless you're a lawyer, you gotta be careful because your interpretation could be skewed the wrong way. So, Mr. G, we need to, is, is there just a way to take that thirty-three, one twenty-nine and say, or mayor, so much of it is this, so much of it is that? Or if it was part of a retainer that wasn't paid? Because we already were all, you know, we got rid of the retainer, which thing cost us more money because we want the billable hours.
Yeah, we can, I think we can line item amounts if that's the case.
Mr. Goodaddy, can you...
Can you provide us something in that fashion then?
Sure.
Okay.
Can you, can you send us all a copy of the order disqualifying the firm? So that we know exactly the date at which place and we know what the language is? I think that might help us too.
Okay, so we'll do first reading.
Dave, I do have a copy of the order and I will enter it in the record tonight and I'll send you...
But he should send it to everybody.
Yes.
We do the first reading under agreement that the law department will not consider us in arrears and begin charging us interest, which they have by law the right to do. Marv, Marv, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay.
He slyly ignored you.
I know, but by law, you have the right to do that.
We're not gonna do it.
Okay.
A few more.
Moving on to number eight and nine, um, shows your line.
Seven.
Seven, do I skip one?
You did, seven.
Oh, you know why? Because I didn't print that one. Number seven, the establishment of compensation schedule. Sylvia, if you'll introduce that as the finance chair. Um, mayor, if you would like to speak to that or...
Uh, this is, uh, this is a compensation that is, coincides with the increases that were given to the unions. And Claudia's here, so I, I always bow to our HR director who does a very good job. Um, she can probably fill you in as well as I can.
Um, yes, a lot of it is just kind of clean up language. We've had some title changes throughout the year that we've adjusted on the compensation schedule. Um, as you'll see, you know, we updated the members of council. Everyone's at the same salary now, it's one example. Um, we've added a few positions as the mayor's like to head in a different direction in some ways. We've updated the compensation range, so the pay grades, so as the employees receive the two point seven five increase, that will increase with them. Um, I added a few more notes clarifying what exempt versus non-exempt positions are within the city, which, as you might know, has to do with the Fair Labor Standards Act. Um, those are really the big changes here. And I don't really think of them as changes, just more clerical updates and administrative type things, so.
The pay ranges, have they been increased or are they still the same?
No, they did increase two point seven five percent as we are giving a two point seven five percent increase to all the non-union employees.
So sometimes we have done that, sometimes we have adjusted, sometimes we've left the pay ranges the same.
Yeah.
And allowed people to move up inside the pay ranges. So, we did last year, we did last year, we, we did increase the pay ranges last year, so.
If we increase the pay ranges every time we give, uh, any new raise, why do we...
Yeah, then we were in trouble.
Why don't we, why do we have pay ranges? That's my whole point. I thought pay ranges were based upon a determination of the value of the service rendered for those positions, so.
Well, your point is well taken. The reason it was done last year was that we hadn't done it for a few years.
Right.
Okay, so it's not necessarily done every year. I, and I think we should keep this at first reading. There's some additional detail in there concerning the law department, which maps up to the other ordinance that we're just discussing concerning the law department, so.
Does this do any impact on current pay?
Um, it will adjust, obviously, since this is dated back to January one, it's gonna create, um, a little more work on our payroll administrator in doing the retro pay for the employees.
We've done it before.
But outside of that, it's not too intrusive, no.
So it is, if, once we pass it, it is retroactive?
Right, it says it on the ordinance.
Okay, but it will, so we don't want to belabor this into march, guys, because it becomes more of a detriment in, for, someone having to work a lot additional hours. Plus, if the only concern is the law department, I'm not sure what else would be a concern. But make sure you put together your questions and get them to the mayor for Claudia so we can get them answered at our next meeting.
Well, I guess one question that Dave has just raised is should we have, basically expanded the pay ranges again? Or should we try to maintain them within a certain range? And then as people do get raises over time, then there may be a need to adjust it. But we don't necessarily have to do it every year. And that would be one of the...
In the traditional business world, you have a scale, minimum and maximum.
Uh-huh.
And you may never hit maximum, but it's there as an incentive for an employee. So to say, I will only raise the maximum when I think it's due, that, that's not how general business works. And, and I know that because I had my appraisal this morning. So the doc, maximum, minimums and, and the midpoint. In a lot of cases, if you show a midpoint, it acts and a maximum never grows. It's, it's a perverse incentive. So, you know, this is something that is traditionally, so we'll do first reading and then get your questions together. Moving on to eight and nine. And I take them together because there are two things I will offer them. There are two things that I talked about last year. I'm going to offer them both up for first reading. One is to repeal the council member's health care plan. The other is to repeal the recreation fee discount. The reason I'm offering them for first reading is to be able to have the residents have some dialogue with their thoughts on it. Um, healthcare, I've heard from, you know, we'll get more people to run for office. I haven't met somebody yet who ran because of the healthcare. Uh, the discounts on the recreation center, I'm not even sure anyone was ever taking it. There's only one other person I usually see, which is you, so. Um, so I'm gonna offer those for first reading. Number ten, am I right?
I believe so.
Sylvia, this is your checkbook dot com.
Right. Uh, and I did have an opportunity to speak to a couple of people who are coordinating with the Summit County area in this northeast Ohio. And I did, uh, in fact, confirm that there are several cities, including Streetsboro, who are on ohiocheckbook dot com now, the, the, with the fact that our particular accounting system already has a template, uh, which is the same template that they, they use in Streetsboro and a number of other places in this area. I have to say, it's, uh, I did go out and look at ohiocheckbook dot com. You can go out there and look. And, uh, it's very informative what it shows you about monthly expenditures and the general trends of expenditures. They have good, very good charts with it. So, uh, I'm, uh, the whole point of this is to increase the transparency and visibility of our expenditures so the residents have a convenient place to look and see all that information. And, um...
Do the residents right now have a place to get all the information?
Not, no, not really, no. They, they would have to...
Through a public records request, they wouldn't be able to get all the information?
Yeah, well, public records, of course. But the, the point is that this is, uh, this doesn't require...
How much more work would this, uh, do to someone who had to enter this into the computer?
Not very much, actually. I looked at the template and I talked to them and basically, uh, they, they take the output from the accounting system and dump it into the spreadsheet that's used by the...
That's not the only problems I have, but that was just two off topic ahead.
Right, well, I'm telling you, that's, they've already worked it through for our particular accounting system and their, the, a template is available, so really, it's not really that much work at all. So, and they don't charge you for it either.
I've talked to a number of fellow mayors and, uh, none of the communities surrounding us and many in Cairo County don't use it, so I, uh...
I understood that, I was gonna bring it up shortly too.
Well...
What were the reasons why they said they didn't want to use it?
Well, it first of all, causes them to have to put more time into the finance department and have them putting this stuff up. It's busy enough in our finance department, let alone having to create more detail for some other document that you gotta continue to watch. And, uh, if somebody wants a record of our city, they certainly can ask for a public records request and we give it to them.
I think that...
I mean, we only had fifty or how many last year, public records requests? So if somebody wants it, they can call in and ask for it.
That's true, I think the big...
The mayor complained all last year and the year before about public records.
No, they...
I said, well, that's what I'm saying though, I...
He complained about them, this would...
If residents want it, let them, call up and make a request.
Well, then they can go on to, and the, the amount of work here is very small, we can, we're talking...
Are there any other questions?
If there's, I guess for me, I'm thinking about our situation currently with a new financial director coming into play. And not only that, I wanna see how this thing plays out. I'm curious to see, I, I smell political fishiness in this. I've heard some things about why this is coming out now and it's helping a campaign, but that's, that's irrelevant. What I'm really after is, we got a new financial director coming in right now. And I think we need to give that person some time to get settled before we throw more things on their back. I, I'm not opposed to this, but I wanna see it play out a little bit and give this lady some time to dip her feet in the water and, and get comfortable before we add things to her plate.
Well, we could do first reading. Um, I, I have some concerns because of crash. It, it's not proven yet. It's a system that has had some issues with it. Mr. Mandell has admitted it had issues to it.
Yeah.
Um, I think it needs to be proven before we put our information out there. And the, the communities that are out there, I'm not seeing large communities. Do first reading, do a little more homework on it. I, I can't see the benefit right now.
Well, I think the residents can see what we're spending money on and who we're spending money with.
This would be a public...
This is a, just on a website, yes. It's a, it's a website that is paid for by the state. They do, they provide the template for you to be able to take the output from your accounting system, which shows all your payments.
Created by the state pressure, who could change at the end of a election and be gone or be altered again.
I wouldn't mind holding it on first reading, I wanna do some more researching too.
Can I ask Sylvia to finish?
She was done.
Well...
It's free, it's got a template and she sent us...
Yes, I did.
She sent us one paper on it.
I, I did. And I also have a list of the communities that have our particular accounting system that have already put this thing into place. So I will forward that to everyone so that they can go out and look at it.
Great.
And I'm happy to go first reading. And I, I just think that there's nothing to be concerned about. It's purely, uh, it's a digital access by the residents to what we're spending money on. That's all it's doing.
I just have a concern that it's crashed and hasn't been proven.
Well, every new system is crashed.
If someone who works in IT and has worked in IT, numbers can, if it's not accurate, life can be very ugly. Number eleven and twelve are our perps. Um, we have one opening that we're filling and we have one reappointment. I was gonna call it renewal, but it's not really a renewal, it's a reappointment. Uh, Mr. Greer is the reappointment. Mr. Greer has been very active, positive, great thoughts as a member of the Parks and Market Commission. I, I would ask, we do one, two, three? Um, Kevin, would you like to do your first one?
No, I don't know about, yeah, sure, I'll try it. I'm reading over my Crip notes right now.
Could I, could I ask just a question here? How are we going about selecting these folks for reappointments? Obviously, somebody has been on the commission before.
Pennant's been on the commission. We traditionally reappoint, the same as we do, we did on other commissions. And Karen has actually, in fact, if you'd like to know anything about Karen, she's sitting here. Karen actually has been in attendance at our meetings, um, has been already vocal, has already given us some great ideas and actually pursued the fact that she would like to become a member when appropriate. Now, ancient history, how did I become a member of the Parks and Market Board? The exact same way. I became very active in the Parks and, that was happening, founded the soccer thing and said, okay, let's take this forward and was then part of the committee that founded the actual rec center. I feel very confident, Karen, do you wanna say something to, I'm gonna do that?
No, I just wanna serve.
Is Kevin doing that one too?
Yep, we're gonna make Kevin do both.
Oh, jeez.
Sorry. Third reading, third reading for both of them?
I got a second shot at it, huh?
Just remember, you don't have to read it, so same Karen's last name.
That's true, that's true.
Joseph, whatever. Anything else?
Yeah, I, I have a question on the, uh, resolution number three. Um, I think you mentioned that we're gonna try to do three reading, how does that come along?
Go for it, let me take a vote.
They what?
I mean, that's...
Oh, I thought that was on four.
I also have the Ohio...
I thought it was on three.
It's on four.
On four.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the Ohio checkbook up online if anybody wants to take a look at it. I've looked at it before.
So, are we gonna vote through three readings and then we're gonna vote on the measure?
Yes, that's how it works.
Okay.
So the first thing out is the officers, the mayor will ask if there's any nominations, if there's a second. Then he'll close it, then we'll vote on each position, then we go in politically.
No, I, I understand that process, but I thought Sylvia wanted to hold it to first reading.
Which one?
Three is gonna be first reading.
Okay, and you're, you're going with four, but we're on third reading.
I said that I preferred it to stay at the first reading, other people that said they didn't, so we will see.
But you're a council side.
Okay.
Thank you for indulging.
Thank you for the...
Joe, bye.
Joe, I see that you moved your seat up a bit there. Or is it the gavel just moved?
Yeah, this is a, I don't even know.
Oh, okay, I thought you...